The minutes from the April tenth meeting have been received and they'll stand approved. There's no objections.
Mr. President, we'd like to go ahead and do the six-month review and if that's okay with you, Ms. Kling and Mr. Culver as finance chairs, go ahead and do the six-month review and kind of refresh where we are at this point, where our revenues are and where our expenditures are, and this is a kind of the halfway point which happened about, what, a month and a half ago, isn't it?
About a month.
Yeah, about a month ago. So this is the halfway point for our year and this is a good way to make sure that we kind of keep on top of this as we go along. So, Mr. Taylor, if you would go through our finances.
Councilmembers, what I'll present to you is a report that's similar to what you've seen for the past several years, hopefully in a familiar format, that'll just highlight the things the mayor has just described, our revenues and our expenditures at mid-year. We've given you a monthly report about our key revenues and mid-year we have better information about a number of our key revenues and we have a better feel, of course, for where we are expenditure-wise as we head into the last half of our year. So we'll go through that real quickly. First thing we'll talk about is just review our 2014 budget. It's always important to know and be reminded about the goals that we have for this year and where we wanted to head revenue and expenditure-wise when we made our plans over six months ago. We'll review a little bit about the recent history. It's not as recent as it used to be, but it's still very important to the issues that we talk about today in our budget. We'll give you a quick update of our 2014 financials for as much information as we know and then look ahead over the summer when we begin to talk about the 2015 budget. First of all, our general fund 2014 budget, of course, you know our general fund represents most of our city operations, our basic services. We have only two departments that are not included within that and that it's water pollution control and community development. The 2014 budget is a $241.1 million budget. If you look back at what we actually received last year, it's $5 million more than that figure. $236.1 was what we collected last year, which was within a few hundred thousand dollars of what we had budgeted for that. So last year we were right on target with revenues. So this year we need $5 million new dollars to support our spending plans and that's a 2.1% growth rate, a rather modest growth rate when you look historically at how the city had been growing before the recession changed things significantly. Our expenditures were balanced within that revenue budget. We do have about $600,000 of surplus that's planned, but that's all in our tourism-type restricted funds. The general fund 2014 budget cost changes. Each year we review this for you so you can see where our so-called new money goes when we allocate it in the budget. Personnel, of course, commands most of the increase in our budget every year because it represents our largest resource. That's a $3.8 million increase in the budget compared to a year ago. Step raises and our cost of living raise to employees, that accounts for most of that. We have retirement and healthcare costs which are almost $2 million more in this year's budget and then a variety of other personnel changes that actually reduced some of that by about a million dollars. Our operating budget was up $900,000. Huntsville City Schools and our capital improvement plan contributions were up about a million and that represents a formula of sales tax. Our budget history, again, you've seen this slide many times over the past few years, but we're just reminding you of what our revenue curve and our expenditures looked like during a time that was very difficult for us, fortunately not as difficult as it was for many communities around the country. But nonetheless, we had quite a bit of budget stress because our revenue, our expenditure budgets were rising while revenues were falling. So that three-year period was very difficult and the council, working with the mayor, had to make lots of significant decisions. The only reason it's important to continue to look at that is because that stress that we experienced represented by revenues that we no longer collected, that stress has almost built in permanently, if you will, in our budget because we had to remove some costs from our budget that are very important to the city and those costs are still removed. A significant amount of that needs to find its way back in over time. These were the cost reductions that we made during that period and for the most part those have persisted. Fleet costs were reduced $7.6 million, critical needs for our departments and we're still meeting those with available funds as we can, but we're not nearly at that level. We made cuts in a variety of other areas. Our CIP, as you know, took the brunt of that cutting of $27 million, a little less than half of that, and that has resulted in a change to our capital improvement plan over the 10-year period that we manage it. This is where we are with respect to 2014 revenues as we see them right now. You can see all of our major categories which represent almost 90% of our revenues. We have lots of revenues, but the all-other category only represents about 10%. So as these top 10 or so go, so goes our budget. Sales and use tax, of course, is the dominant one at about $140 million, representing about 45%, excuse me, 54% of the general fund budget. That's, right now, we're at 1.8% growth through March. We reported that to you recently. That is short of our budget growth target of 3%. Last year we did about a little over 4%. So we're still within striking distance of that figure. We would be short on our budget if that growth rate persisted. We are optimistic that because of cold winter and other things that we've seen in the national and other local economies, that that will rebound in the last half. So if we achieve our growth rate for the last six months, then we'll be about a million dollars short in total in sales and use tax. That represents only about eight tenths of a percent of our total budget. Privileged licenses are running a little bit behind right now. We're also expecting that to catch up a little bit in the next several months and predicting a small shortfall. Huntsville Utilities' payments to us are running at 6%, well ahead of our budget expectations. That's going to actually trend downwards a little bit for the rest of the six months. That's a function of the cold winter and some of the revenues that we collect because of Huntsville Utilities' activity, but we'll be slightly ahead on that. All of the other revenues, there's nothing terribly significant to note about that, about those. You can see where we are and where we expect to be at the end of the year. Rental taxes is a significant deviation of about a half million dollars. That's out of a $3 million budget. That really represents some trending miscalculations on our part when we were looking at rental taxes last fall. So we will expect a hit of that much on rental taxes. Building permits are running behind, but we've also had a difficult winter, you know, related to the activity that they see for which permits are issued and the indications we have now is that that activity is picking back up quickly and so we don't expect to be short that much in all those categories of building permits. So overall, right now, if we had to call it, it would be about a million dollars shortfall. Of course, that assumes lots of things that are very difficult for us to predict, namely sales tax. When you're trying to predict what everybody and all the businesses in Huntsville are going to spend in a given fiscal year, you can understand why that's a daunting projection activity, but a million dollars is within, again, a half a percent of our $240 million budget. So that represents being very close and we're not concerned about that kind of deviation. We do have to continue to watch it though, particularly sales tax. Just to remind you, our sales tax is split three ways. About two-thirds of it is kept by the general fund for basic operations. 18% of it goes to the capital improvement plan. That's down from 23% after we restructured it post-recession. The Huntsville City Schools receive about 15%. That goes straight to the school system for operations. So it's the green slice of pie that we watch with respect to how it affects our basic operations. Capital improvement plan is insulated a little bit differently from changes in sales tax, but we do have to watch it. Here's where we are, a slide that our finance committee sees on a regular basis as well as the administration. Collections must grow about 3%, slightly over that this year. We're at 1.8, so we have to grow at 4% for the rest of the year in order to reach our budgetary goals. That's probably a little ambitious, but again, based on what I told you on the previous slide, if we get back to that 3% level, we'll end up the year to a 2% to 2.5% growth rate. So that, again, will be very close. As far as expenditures go, personnel right now, we think we're within plus or minus a half a million dollars of our personnel budget, which is even closer than we are in revenues. That's about $135 million budget, very close to sales tax and lots of moving parts and variables there, but we still think right now that we're within striking distance of our personnel budget goals. Healthcare, we're within budget right now. The cost trends for the past few months have, it's risen pretty steeply, so we're going to have to continue to watch that over the next few months, but right now we're within the overall healthcare budgets. Fuel costs, another highly variable and difficult to predict thing. Interestingly enough, we're within $40,000 of our annual budget right now at current costs that we pay, which somewhat mirror the trends at the pump, but that can change, as you know, pretty quickly. But right now, it looks like we're in good shape on our $4 million fuel budget. Fleet repairs is a significant cost. It's increased in recent years simply because of the age of our fleet. We've got a few departments that we're going to have to address with some over-budget situations and we're working on those. We're looking to make those adjustments within the existing budgets of the departments. So right now we're seeing slight overage in that expenditure. All other costs right now, we don't have any indications that those are not within budget. So overall, revenues and expenses, we think that we're managing within the budgetary goals set by the council and we'll continue to watch it and keep you updated as we move forward. Lots of variables and there's still consumer spending anxiety, concerns about lots of things in the national, regional, and of course, our own local economy. So we do just have to be sensitive to how quickly things can change. As far as what that will mean for 2015, if we look ahead, if we meet our budgetary goals and again, we're assuming that we're going to be very close to that, then next year's budget unfortunately is going to look just like 2013 and 14. It goes back to the slide I showed you before about the stress that we continue to live with. Things just got smaller for our local economy and the city's growth has been very modest over that period of time, 1% to 2% growth rate per year. And so most of our costs that we incur, particularly for personnel, healthcare raises and such, that commands most of our increase in revenue and so that's why it's going to continue to remain tight. Step raises and cost of living raises range in the $2 to $3 million range each year. Good news is retirement's not going up a million dollars next year. We already know that. It'll go up just a little bit more, have a little more cost than we're experiencing this year. Healthcare, we're expecting a half million to a million dollar increase anywhere from 8% to 10%. And then operating costs, we know that we're going to have to increase those budgets. Don't know how all this is going to fit together, but that right there amounts to about $5 million, which is 2% growth in our budget, which is not an unrealistic figure to think about for next year based on what we know right now. So everything continues to be tight. It's not that we want it that way, but that's just the nature of local economic conditions right now. A lot of positive things happening in the city, but it still translates into modest growth. So a couple of other things we need to point out. We do have, as I've mentioned already, a significant amount of deferred needs. Capital plan is deferred. We talk a lot about that. We've pushed a lot of projects out. We've outright deleted some projects. We've cut back on things and so that continues to remain important to us. Fleet, growing service demands, agency appropriations that were cut and have not been restored. So those are things that are, the illustration we've used in the past, those players left the game and they're sitting on the bench and we need to get them back in play over time before we think about bringing new things onto the team. Other things we need to think about, we've had significant economic development opportunities that have come to us. Some of those the council and the mayor have already announced and we are seeing the benefits of that. As the mayor has mentioned on numerous occasions, we've got lots of economic development opportunities in the pipeline and so we'll have to continue to know that those are things we've got to consider. We've also got contingent expenses out there, things that are based on efforts that we're still working on and those could be significant as well. So we've got to exercise continued restraint just so we can meet those obligations when we have to do them and those are million-plus type contingencies. So just know those things as we head into next year budget season. Know that we're in good shape right now. We're meeting our budgetary goals overall and again, we'll continue to keep you informed with the latest information and we'll talk about it again this summer when we start talking about next year's budget. I'll be glad to address any questions if there are any or may or defer to you for any additional comments.
Councilmembers, do you have questions?
Mr. President, I think we could say that I think Mayor Battle and Mr. Taylor have certainly been very vigilant in watching our revenues and it has been a little bit uncertain out there nationally, but I think we're still showing that we're a lot of stability and the fact that we're within a half a percent is a good thing. So what I can tell from the finance committee, it looks like both you guys are doing a pretty good job watching the finances. We're in pretty good, stable shape.
Mr. Taylor, I have a question about the fleet costs. What are we, 500K over budget? Is it fire trucks, garbage trucks? What is it?
Right now, we've got expenses. There is some public works-related repairs. Public transit is a department we're looking at as well. We've trended some of their costs. They've had some significant repairs this year, so we're really trying to establish what the end-of-year figure would be. It's in the $200,000 range right now, it looks like.
So mostly we're having trouble with our buses for public transit?
It's been a few instances that have jacked up the trend this year and so we're trying to figure out if we've taken care of all those needs and we can see it normalize.
Yeah, and what I'm trying to get at is every year we ask the police chief and fire chief, do they need more vehicles? And every year they're fine with what they're getting and so I just want to make sure that they're really fine with what they're getting.
Well, I don't think their answer is that we're fine.
Yeah, well, I've asked them many times, are they fine with what they're getting? And they say yes.
Yeah, no, the honest answer they've given you is that we're going to work within our limitations.
Yeah.
We do have constraints. We have appropriated money out of last year's surplus. We're purchasing a million dollars' worth of police vehicles this year and we've also made investments in other public safety equipment in other departments. We've done a number of departments in this fiscal year from money that was left over from last year. So we are meeting the needs. We don't have as much as we need, but we are still prioritizing it, trying to address the oldest vehicles, the ones that are costing us the most operating money, particularly in public safety.
Thank you. And then how do you know, or why do you think healthcare costs are going to go up 8% to 10%?
Well, that's just been the trend. We're seeing that kind of growth rate right now, but it's almost like sales tax or fuel. It's anybody's guess. It's a function of not only our employees' wellness and their health claims experience, but also just the cost of medical care. So it's just difficult to protect, but that's been the trend here recently. We do rely on an in-depth review of that that HR conducts with Blue Cross as we look towards next fiscal year, but that's just the kind of figures that we expect as we look into next year's budget.
Yeah, and it may be the normal amount of increase. It just seems like Mayor Battle with those healthy Huntsville plan and we're doing so many more things for the employees, it seems like the costs would be going down or not rising quite as dramatically?
Well, there's, all those efforts are intended to produce wellness, promote wellness, and reduce healthcare costs, but a lot of that's going to be over time too. We're talking about lifetime types of changes. We've been very open about some of the changes would be immediate, especially as we look towards the new clinic model that the council has approved and it's just now getting initiated. So we'll see immediate results, but the really biggest dividends will come in the future.
And if we stay on the path that we're on, will you just delay expenses to next year or will we cut anything out of, not spend money that we planned on in this year's budget?
If we continue on...
With the same kind of sales tax we've been getting for the last couple of months and we don't make our revenue budget?
Well, we're going to look at April and May. Of course, the new 1% sales tax has gone into effect last month and we're just now collecting that and so we'll have a pretty good indication that we're out of the cold winter as well. So April and May will give us more confidence one way or the other about where our long-term trend is going to be, but if we feel like sales tax is not going to return to budget levels, we'll just have to assess the impact of it and then just decide what expenses may need to be adjusted. And deferring them could be one of the responses to that.
Thank you very much.
Councilmembers, any other questions for Mr. Taylor?
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
We have resolutions for adoption only. 2A is a resolution congratulating William C. Pippen upon his retirement from Huntsville Utilities and as president and chief executive officer for 21 years. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. And Mr. Oshewski, I'm not sure, do you think you should abstain on this?
I think I should abstain.
Okay. Mr. Oshewski did not vote on this. He's abstaining.
I need to mention the resolution.
Mayor Battle, if you'd like to talk about it?
Councilmembers, we are adding to the agenda the position of a Personnel Action, which is Director of taking the place where our Director of Legislative Affairs and Economic Development was. We have changed that name to Office of Business Relations and downgraded the grade on it, but we're going to ask you to look at that tonight and consider it tonight if that's possible.
Councilmembers, so Mayor Battle's asking that we put this on the agenda and vote on it tonight and the chair moves for yam's consent to do so.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mr. Culver, how do you vote? Ms. Oshewski?
Aye.
Mr. Kling?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. We have yam's consent and we'll take this up under the mayor's time later in the meeting. B is a resolution congratulating Reverend India J. Scruggs upon her 25th, 25th pastoral anniversary of the Mackens Chapel Cumberland Presbyterian Church. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Culver. Discussion. Ms. Culver.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will present this resolution on behalf of Councilman Showers on Friday night at the Weston. It's an honor and a privilege to present resolutions of this nature to people who have, like Mr. Pippen's and Pastor India Scruggs, who have committed their lives to helping the community and it's an honor and a privilege for me to do this as we celebrate her 25th anniversary at Mackens Chapel Cumberland Presbyterian Church here in Huntsville. And I certainly invite all of you who can to attend as well. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. On our agenda tonight, 15F has been deleted and 15DD was added today. It's hyperlinked, but I'd like the council to go ahead and prove the adding it to the agenda, so I'll make a motion that we add 15DD. It's a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Huntsville and Attitude LLC. I make a motion we add it to the agenda.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor adding it, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It's been added. We have no business with outside legal reputation. We do have public hearings to be held. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on an ordinance number 14-167 zoning newly annexed property lying east of Old Jim Williams Road and on the north side of Martin Road to Neighborhood Business C1 District. This was set March 13, 2014, at a regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
Lisa Letto, Planning Division. This is 0.42 acres. It's the hatched area you see here and it is lying here north of Martin Road and east of Jim Williams Circle, Old Jim Williams Road. And this is the area you see here. It will be an expansion of the business next door. The proposed zoning is Highway Business, excuse me, Neighborhood Business C1 District and it has been recommended by Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on an ordinance number 14-169 zoning newly annexed property lying on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and on the north side of Buford Drive to Residence 1B District. This was set March 13, 2014, at the regular council meeting. Ms. Letto?
This is the hatched area you see here. This is a total of 45.72 acres. It's currently vacant. It's the site of our proposed residential subdivision and Planning Commission has recommended approval.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Now is the time and place for a public hearing on an ordinance number 14-171 zoning newly annexed property lying east of Old Big Cove Road and north of Hampton Ridge Drive to Residence 1A District. This was set March 13, 2014. Ms. Letto?
This is hatched area you see here is 26.66 acres. The proposed zoning is Residence 1A District, which is consistent with the zoning of the adjacent subdivision and this will be an extension of this subdivision.
Thank you.
And it's been recommended by Planning Commission.
Thank you. Does anyone from the public wish to address the council on this particular issue? Public hearing is now closed. Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We're not communications from the public. When I call your name, you'll have three minutes to address the council. Ms. Teri Michael. It's Ms. Michael here. Mr. Reginald Hill. Ms. Schelf, you state your name and address for the record, please.
Teri Michael is actually here. She went to the restroom.
Okay.
My name is Reggie Hill, 627 Blake Bottom Road, Huntsville, Alabama, 35806.
Reggie, we're having a hard time hearing you. Can you put the microphone towards your mouth? It's a direct microphone.
Yes, sir. My apologies, just trying to get set up here. Reggie Hill, 627 Blake Bottom Road, Huntsville, Alabama, 35806.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. The State of the District, the role of Huntsville. Friends, good evening. It is imperative at this time I allow you to reflect upon my recent thoughts. This week alone, through charity work, I have witnessed firsthand the horrific frustrations of living in a neglected community. I attended the State of the Schools address and also an education-based community awareness and prayer vigil. Through these experiences, I have gathered that our issues are far greater than data and money. The situation that has been created amongst us is moralistically horrendous. People blessed with the responsibility to govern have been misguided by illusions of empowerment and success based upon solitary gain. Instead of recognizing the prosperous opportunities obtainable with steadfast collaboration, we each suffered through the tribulations of life or the satisfaction of segregated isolation. Do we not each gain an amazing release and sense of accomplishment when we tackle worthwhile projects that began as just an idea yet then become submerged by massive group efforts? Unfortunately, this turns into greed for some individuals who wish to use certain responsibilities as stepping stones and resume boosters. It is unfortunate that humans learn by copying what they see and repeating what they hear versus thinking about what we observe and acting upon what will be most beneficial to everyone. How can we expect our local government to be inclusive, accessible, transparent, engaged, responsible, truly compassionate, productive, or honest when federal government leads as such a bad example? This trickles down into our states and then into our communities. I advise that every person under the sound of my voice recognize that we must treat our every thought, action, occupation, relationship, responsibility, tribulation, and momentous occasion as a child, knowing that it takes a village to raise a child. How probable is the chance that this child will be of longstanding purpose with a negatively influential village? In this week, I realized that Huntsville is separated into two communities, not the north and the south, but rather those who are unable to accept and integrate a society and will go at all measures and utilize all forms of manipulations to segregate communities, treating their mission like a sport. And those who are sick and fed up, excuse me, those who are sick and fed up with discrimination but present not a single solution amidst a dwelling of commotion. Very soon, people are going to rise up in these opposing communities and press forward on the ideal that monetary scrutiny at the cost of millions of lives over ages of times is not worth it and that it is up to the people to mobilize together and make change. We can pray as long as we want to, but if we do not put our feet on the pavement, our faith is dead. God has indeed already blessed each of us. It is now upon us to use our abilities to bless God. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Gary Bershers? Sir, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Gary Bershers, 405 Thornton Avenue. I have two issues tonight I want to bring to the council. Yes, gentlemen, I'm back to talk about the 1%. As I stated before, I am in disagreement with that. So as a result, over the last two to three months, several of us have gone out and done some informal surveys among the five districts that we have in Huntsville. We chose to get 500 inputs just to see kind of where people stood. Seventy-two had no opinion. Forty-seven of those 500 had no idea that their taxes had been raised. That point concerned me immensely. Out of the rest, which was 381, 64 were in favor of it. That leaves 317 who were either against the tax raise or upset that they had no voice in that tax raise occurring, that the council did it themselves. That's 63.4% of the people we surveyed against the tax. That's 63.4% of the people we surveyed against the tax. I don't know if that's because they're against the tax or they're against how it was done. They may have voted in favor of it if the tax had been brought to a public vote. We didn't ask that question. So I asked this question. If we go and talk to 45,000 individuals in Huntsville on the same issue with the same series of questions, that means if the statistics holds to what we just saw, there would be more than 25,000 to 30,000 people who would be against it. That tells me that you need to go back to the citizens and get their input on that tax because they feel that they were left out. And there's a group of us, we're calling ourselves loosely the Huntsville Citizens for Tax Reform, we're going to be doing this. We're going to be bringing information to you and the news media about how it's affecting people. And just so, just giving you a heads up, you're going to hear some more information on that issue. The second issue has to do with Ann's School of Dance. Unfortunately, I was not able to be here at the last city council meeting. But I have a question. Is the police department being used by some entity in the City of Huntsville management to target just individuals on Le Grand, Alabama, and Panzi Street? Seems like all of a sudden now, the city is going, the police department's going out and they are targeting those people for parking violations. Now, we were told by an individual Huntsville Police Department that they were just following the rules of the laws that we have. Great. So I went to Piedmont, I went to Twickenham, I went to Blossomwood, and I went to Five Points. And at times, I followed members of the Huntsville Police Department at a distance just to see if we're following true, through on that. They didn't stop and give tickets to individuals in those communities who were parked supposedly in violation. So I'm curious if the city's decided to punish...
Sir, your time's up. Do you need more time?
One more moment.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I ask you to consider what's going on because here's the final point of this discussion. The other night, I sat and watched a police car, number 1878, said at Glenn's Florist, which is across the street from Ann's. And coming out of that location, you were not supposed to turn right at one point and left at one point. People were doing it all the time, and the police did nothing coming out of Ann's School. Now, I just simply ask that if we're going to use the police department as a point of going in and following the rules and the laws and then ticketing those people who don't, how about we do it for all people and not just the people that live in the housing community there? Because it seems like somebody's decided to punish us since we're simply trying to get our community safe. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. President?
Ms. Kling.
I could kind of follow up on what Mr. Breschers had talked about. I had had similar phone calls I've received from the neighborhood, and he's not just the only one concerning, concerning the enforcement issues. I've tried to relay that to the, to the appropriate people. Also, council members, I know that there is a resolution that was prepared by Mr. Geoffrey On. I did talk to some of the residents and also with an outside attorney late this afternoon, and I will not be making a motion concerning this resolution at tonight's meeting.
Thank you. Mr. Bill Green?
Mr. Stamper, I think he wants to bring some stuff up.
My name is Bill Green. I live...
Sir, I'm sorry you have to go to the microphone. State your name and address for record.
My name is Bill Green. I live at 14100 Bell Road, Athens, Alabama, and I'm speaking on behalf of Rod and Donna Matani, who live at 1299 Jupiter Court, number one, Redstone Arsenal, Alabama, 35808. May 14, 2012, at the intersection of Pratt and Washington, there was an accident between a police car and the truck driven by Donna Matani. I work at the PEO Aviation on the Arsenal. Rod works with me and is an equipment specialist out there on an aviation platform. We were at a restaurant in Phoenix, Arizona, eating when we got the call that she had had a wreck. Is everybody okay? Yes, we're fine. What happened? Well, I was turning left at an intersection, and it turned yellow, which at the corner of Pratt, Washington, I had tried to clear the intersection, and I saw a police car coming, and I thought, surely to goodness, a police car will stop or slow down and let me clear on a yellow light. And you can see in the folders I passed out, that didn't happen. Okay, we're coming up on two years here, and the reason we're here is because I didn't know if there was anything magical or that it needed to be done before two years was up. So while Mr. Matani was deployed to a nasty Ford operating base in a foreign country, I thought, took it upon myself to call the city attorney and see if perchance, given the lack of a citation in this case, as you'll see in the folders I passed out, that you might volunteer to fix the truck. Okay, that didn't happen. I talked to a lady in the city attorney's office, and I apologize, I didn't write names down. And she said, well, it's been a year and a half, we can't, you know, this accident case, and kind of mushed around a little bit. And then she sent me to the chief of police, who called me back in about 10 minutes, which is amazing to me, or was. And the reply I got from him was, well, we didn't have a camera in that car. When I asked about, from the dash cam, can you not tell if the light was yellow or what happened? And the reply I got was that was a spare cruiser, we didn't have a camera in that car, which is decidedly convenient or inconvenient depending on who was right and who was wrong. So my point, what my question is this, I would like to get the truck fixed. In those folders, you'll find three insurance estimates that I got probably last fall, and it might be a little outdated, it's probably within 5% now. And that is my petition to you.
Ms. Green, did you file a claim?
I did not.
Ms. Chirafun, could you explain the process, please?
Well, the process is, is under state law, you have six months within which to file a claim with the city for any damages that you contend were caused by a city employee through his or her negligence or whatever. I'm not aware of any claim. You indicated no claim was filed.
There was no claim filed, and there was no lawyer contacted, which with them moving from Utah here, is why I'm sort of representing them. Sure.
Ms. Green, I'm not sure. So you're asking us tonight, you didn't file a claim, but you're asking now to file one? Or what do you want from us?
That is, that is correct. I just want the client, just want the truck fixed. That's all they want.
Ms. Chirafun, is it possible to file a claim at this late date?
Well, that would be up to the council. They're beyond the statutory period. We don't have any legal responsibility if claims not filed within six months, but you know...
I understand there's no legal basis, but...
Excuse me just a minute. Excuse me just a minute. I have no idea whether the claim being made by him is, is meritorious or not. This is the first I have heard of it.
Okay. Ms. Green, obviously, you're learning that we should have had the claim filed. We were not able to make a decision tonight. We were just brought this up. You hadn't filed a claim. We can ask the city attorney, look at it, study it, and try to make a recommendation back to the council if that will, if that's what you're asking for?
That's what I'm asking you for, yes.
Okay, we'll do that.
Okay, who do I, and I'm a representative. I'll give whoever, whoever the belly button is for this, I'll leave their address so you can contact them.
You can contact me. I'm Mark Russell, President's Huntsville City Council.
Okay. I don't, I mean, if...
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Dwight Wright?
Dwight Wright, 2005 Kildare Street. I'm addressing you again tonight seeking clarification for some of the statements made on behalf of the city in an article that appeared on AL.com concerning the fence that is being constructed from the historic McCormick House. I, along with several of the neighbors, spoke at the last city council meeting concerning the fence and the need for it. There seems to be a lot of confusion on what the purpose of the fence was and how it was to be constructed. The article states, "City officials say they were led to believe that Wright would install a standard decorative fence." And it's quoted as saying, "Everyone was quite clear in their communications with Mr. Wright that we were all talking about a small decorative fence." Mr. Geoffrey On told AL.com on Wednesday. It also quotes him as saying, "No one has any recollection of a fence of that magnitude." These comments contain a lot of subjective words that most likely would have a different meaning to everyone in this room. Standard decorative fence, small decorative fence. It seems to me that these discussions that Mr. Geoffrey On mentions were to get us to a point that agreement could be reached, that agreement being the license agreement that was put on the agenda in July and improved by the entire council. I would assume that the license agreement would contain all the important specifications, specifications that could be clearly understood and measured by anyone reading the agreement, not phrases like "small," "standard," "decorative," but phrases like "not to exceed X feet," "must be made of X material," "must comply with X standard ordinance." No such language is in the agreement. Obviously, the city's recollection of conversations and my recollections are different, but isn't that why we both had lawyers to work on this agreement, so that both sides would be clear? So that after all the discussions and negotiations are complete, do we not rely on the final document as the record of what was decided? And where in that document are the limitations and restrictions that are now being referenced? What objective criteria are specified? Mr. Geoffrey also stated in the article, "I'm sorry, but the fence is not attractive. Aesthetics are an issue as well." What about the complete design is not attractive? Is it the paint color that is not liked, the finials that we plan to use, the landscaping that would be put in place? These questions are hard to answer since you cannot see the finished design. Judging the attractiveness of the fence at this point is a lot like saying you don't like a house that's just been framed. And one final question, Mr. Geoffrey On also stated that the city needs to hang on to this right-of-way on Kildare Street because the area may require public improvements in the future. I would like to ask what improvements are planned that would make use of this unusually shaped right-of-way?
Thank you. Mr. Jerry Burnett? Mr. Bradfield, state your name and address for the record.
Okay, good evening. I'm Jerry Burnett. I live at 2405 Green Hill Drive here in Huntsville, Alabama. And I'm also a bona fide member of the Alabama State Conference and NAACP. And I just wanted to clear up a rumor that was, I don't know how many people, but for the benefit of the individuals who received this document through the mail, nice-looking document, but it's all false. And it says that the NAACP League of Defense Fund agrees with Huntsville City Schools. That's a false statement. I checked both our offices in New York and in Washington DC, and they know nothing about this. But for the benefit of the people who received it, and there's a number of them being floating around in the neighborhood, and I'm sure they cost money, cost good money, taxpayers' money, a waste of taxpayers' money. And I don't think this is a good way for the, I don't know who generated this, and I don't know why they generated, but it's false and it's misleading and it's costing the taxpayers. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jackie Reed? Ms. Reed, give your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coman Drive.
Welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank you always for laying public input at your meetings. I think that's a good thing. I wish everyone had attended the mass prayer service last night at the First Baptist Church on Blue Spring Road. There were over 1,000 people there. I think I had enough prayers to last a lifetime. Everybody should have been there. Pretty interesting. But I believe in this city, if we don't unite and stop the division in this city, we all need to start praying. I think it's bad that we're trying to divide this city, and that needs to stop. We need to do better at trying to meet and stop and all unite from one end of this city to the other. I got a real problem of hearing all this and it's going on when we're all God's people. This has got to stop, in my opinion. I went to Planning Department meeting the other night, and I got two issues that concerns me. Barrett School, Barrett, Barrett or whatever, Schoolhouse, the developer, City of Huntsville. That's what this paperwork says right here. I didn't know y'all were going to spend money to develop, to build a schoolhouse. I mean, maybe architects done got a hold of it and everything, so anyway, sometime you need to look at this and tell me if this is what you're going to do. Where are we getting the money when I seen up here tonight what's going on? We need to cut back and cut out and stop some of this stuff. Anyway, another one on there, somebody's supposed to give me a different copy of that, and Twickenham Square Pedestrian Bridge Developer, COH, is that not the City of Huntsville? They told me it was a typing error. If it'd been a typing error, they should mark through it and put typing error on it. But somebody's supposed to give me a piece of paper saying it was a typing error. So are y'all building the developer pedestrian bridge over here? If y'all are, let us know. Anyway, I really believe the City of Huntsville needs to come up with enough money and buy out Ann's studio. That's what I'm believing, because she's going to file a lawsuit on you all sooner or later, and you know that. If you gave her permission and you gave her a license and you set her up over there with all the noise that's going on, pray somewhere, go find some money and move that over there and make some people happy. We got to find the money. Don't build another parking garage. Go buy some money and buy her out and help her relocate. Anyway, I would do wish that you would hold tonight 15BB, double B, C, and D. And when I read in the paper, AL.com, that all these people, 1,700, are wanting a baseball stadium downtown, stop it. I hear 1,700 people every day fussing about it where I work.
Ms. Reed, your time's up. Do you need more time?
I need a whole lot more, but I'll hurry.
Give her a minute, please.
Anyway.
One more minute, please.
One more minute. Okay, thank you. I have touched about this baseball stadium. I went to the Times, they're the one that did AL.com, and I raised a whole lot of noise. And I said, "That don't represent all the people in the City of Huntsville, because I hear more than that over where I work every day." He's going to let me write an article on AL.com, and he's going to let me tell my opinion, that's not going to be good. But anyway, they don't want no baseball stadium downtown, and you all can't afford it. I've heard a developer may buy and develop it. Please, don't you put any money into that, because if you do, I'm going to squeal loud and clear if I see you helping the developer put a baseball stadium downtown. I had a whole lot more to talk about, but I'm not, I'm going to let you go. Thanks a lot. Appreciate it, and have a good weekend.
You too. Thank you. We have no Huntsville utility items. We do have board appointments to be voted on. 9A1 is a resolution to appoint Marlena Primo to the Madison County 310 Board for a term to expire April 1, 2017. The chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Two is a resolution to reappoint Debbie Reed Batson to the Huntsville Madison County Railroad Authority for a term to expire May 17, 2021.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Are there any other board appointment nominations tonight? We're now at 10. Approval expenditures. 10A is a resolution authorizing expenditures for payment. Mr. Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Moved for payment of vouchers in the amount of $17,559,240.40.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Kling, second by Mr. Culver. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Mr. Kling, do you have an additional finance committee report?
No, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Battle?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to turn, turn some of my time over to City Administrator John Hamilton. He's got a report that was asked for several weeks ago and wants to go through and talk about our hiring practice with the Huntsville Police Department and the latest cadet school that we have in place right now.
Welcome, Mr. Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I guess it was two council meetings ago, we had a member of the, the public come and ask us to take a look at the manner in which we're hiring and recruiting into our police academy. And there was some discussion with council, and we said at the time that we would go and review it, and I would work with the staff and come back and report to you what, what I saw in, in the process for Police Academy 53. I'll tell you that, you know, the mayor and I think all the leadership within the city recognizes the power of diversity across the entire workforce. We also recognize the importance of hiring the best qualified candidates as we, as we pursue hiring actions. And I think that what we accomplished in this particular Police Academy class certainly meets a second piece of that. I think they did a good job of getting the best qualified candidates applied, but it has not met what we would hope for in terms of diversity, and you'll see that in the numbers as we go through. And we'll talk a little bit about some of the, the actions that we have taken in the past and what we intend to do in the future to try and improve that with recognizing there's still much study and work to be done on it. So first, to help folks understand what the process is to become a police officer in Huntsville, first you, you go online and you, you submit an application, and it's, I put on there a short form because it's a, it's a short application. there a short form, because it's a short application. There's a longer one that you fill out later in the process, we'll come to. So that's the first indication of your interest in becoming Huntsville Police Officer. We take that and then immediately schedule you for a physical fitness test. If you pass the physical fitness test, then you are scheduled for, pretty quickly, a video exam. And if you pass that, then you fill out that supplemental application, which is a much longer application. It allows us then to complete the process of validating that you've met the minimum qualifications and that your background is clear to become a police officer. For all of those candidates that pass the minimum qualifications and that background check, we then schedule you for an in-person interview. For this particular class, we had a five-person panel conduct those interviews. The makeup of that panel, there were two white males, two black males, one white female. And amongst them, there were, in terms of the rank or grade, there were two lieutenants, a sergeant, an investigator, and a patrol officer. That panel, once they complete the in-person interviews, they grade, each individually grade the candidates, and then that aggregate score is used to inform the chief essentially on an order of merit list. So he can see who did the best in terms of all of the tests that led up to that, as well as perform best in the interview. And he uses that then to offer a certain number of candidates conditional offers. And he can't give everybody an offer. There is a limit, and it's based on what vacancies he has or anticipates in the short term in the police force. In this case, as you'll see in the numbers, he offered forty conditional offers. Once, for those candidates that receive a conditional job offer, they then go through a psychological exam, a physical exam, which also includes a drug screening, and then a polygraph. And for those that pass those three final steps, they're hired on and are asked to report to the Police Academy. So for this particular year, we received a total of eleven hundred and nine of those initial short-form applications. As we went through those, we found thirty-five were duplicates, so that left a thousand and seventy-four unique people who applied to become police officers. For the purpose of this study, we had twelve applications where the person had not indicated race. And so as, what we were looking at specifically was the racial demographics of this class. None of those twelve applicants made it beyond the initial steps, and so they never got deep enough into the process. And so I've excluded them, you know, just so they don't come in and mess with the sticks. I don't know where to put a minority versus white. So the remaining applications that were analyzed, we had a thousand and sixty-two applicants, and they broke down, three hundred and eighty-three were minorities and six hundred and seventy-nine were white. So looking, going back through that process and understanding where we lost candidates, where they were filtered out through the process, we'll start with the minorities and the three hundred and eighty-three minorities, and we lost two hundred and sixty in the physical fitness test phase. Now, that does not mean we had two hundred and sixty people fail it. The majority of the folks that we lost in the physical fitness phase, both regardless of race, the vast majority just never showed up. So we have literally hundreds of people that put in an application or scheduled for the physical agility test and then just don't show up. In fact, over five hundred. So, you know, nearly fifty percent of our initial applicants never showed up to take the PT test. We did have a number of failures, and we also had people who passed the PT test and then chose to withdraw from the process. So those three things are what make up the losses in the physical fitness test. No-shows, failures, or choosing to withdraw voluntarily. So we lost two hundred and sixty minorities, and we lost four hundred and twenty-four whites in that initial phase. They then went to the video exam, and same thing. We do have a small number of people that are scheduled for a video exam and don't show up. In this case, it's a pretty small number, a number that failed and a few that withdrew voluntarily. The majority in that phase were actual failures of the video exam. Lost eighty-one minorities and a hundred and four whites. So the number remaining now asked to fill out the supplemental application and continue through the process was forty-two minorities and a hundred and fifty-one whites. So as you can see, we lost a big, significant percentage of our candidates just in those first two phases. So we had those candidates filled out the applications, and in failing to meet minimum qualifications or failing things in their background checks, we lost twenty-two minorities and fifty-nine whites. So one of the things that I see right off the bat as we look at it is we are losing minorities through those initial three phases, the ones that occur pretty quickly, that are completely objective evaluation of the candidates. We're losing minorities at a much greater rate than we are whites through those phases. So invited to interview were all those that were remaining, twenty minorities and ninety-two whites. And so the percentage there, that twenty is five percent of the original applicants, and the ninety-two is thirteen percent of the original whites. That's why I say we're losing minorities at a greater rate. Clearly, we've got to do some things in our recruiting efforts to increase the pool up there in line number one, and we've got to do some things to make sure that we're bringing in a high number of qualified candidates so that we can get them through those initial processes, with obviously the physical agility test being the main filter we have on both sides of those columns. That's where we lose the most folks, is just not being physically ready to take on the work. So out of those interviews, like I said before, the chief selected a total of forty candidates that he offered conditional offers to. So seven of those were minority and thirty-three were white. And as you can see, the rate of selection out of the interview process was nearly identical. So thirty-five percent of the minorities interviewed were selected, and thirty-five point nine percent of the whites were selected. So had we had a larger, more qualified pool at the top line, we would have probably hit better numbers in terms of diversity. After offering those conditional job offers, we actually had five people that voluntarily withdrew at that point. One was a minority and four were white. We lost one white for psychological. One white candidate did not show up for the physical exam and drug screening, and so was disqualified. And we lost three minorities to failure of the polygraph. So on day one of the academy, we had thirty candidates in the academy, three were minority and twenty-seven were white. I will tell you that since then, you know, the academy's been going on for a couple months now, we've lost four. Four of the white candidates have withdrawn from the course, so right now, today, we still have the three minorities, and we're down to twenty-three whites that are currently in the class. So, you know, as we look at the racial diversity in this particular case, and there's other forms of diversity, and other things that are important for us to look at, you asked us to look specifically, in this case, at the racial diversity. Unfortunately, of the seven minorities that we offered jobs to, we lost more than fifty percent subsequent to them getting that job offer. So, you know, there, I don't know yet, and there's still more study to do on what may have caused that, and are there things we could have done early in the process to maybe filter out those that would have been challenged at the end of the process, but certainly some work to do in increasing that diversity. So some of the recruiting efforts, and this is just kind of run through a list of things that the police force has been doing. I think what we owe you, what I know we owe you, is myself and our HR folks and leadership in the police department to look at, what off of these things? What are the areas that we've targeted for recruiting? Where are we getting a return on investment, or where are we not? Clearly, there's some more work to be done in improving that pool that we're getting at the front end of the process, and so I think we have a lot of work to be done. But there has been, over the last few years, a lot of efforts to target populations that are typically underserved. So across all of the various races that make up the minority pool, as well as going after more female candidates. I did not specifically report to you here on the number of females, but we'd like to see greater diversity in terms of gender as well, and that's something we can look at more later. But we've got work to be done to figure out, how do we target those? I will continue to put some personal effort into looking at, where are the groups in the community that we can help target and get the word out? You know, we're sending all those job announcements to churches, we're sending them to a wide variety of radio and TV stations, things that we think target a broad range of people, but still, we're not comfortable with the words getting out to a broad enough audience. So we owe some more effort in that. And we'll have another class coming up. So we have an academy sitting right now. We will start this whole process again within this next couple of months, as we typically start the recruitment process in the summer to set the class the following winter. So something that we'll have to get, really get after over the next sixty to ninety days in terms of getting things in place for the fifty-fourth class. So, Mr. President, that concludes my briefing here. Certainly available, sit down with individual members of council if they want to go deeper into some of the statistics and numbers. I'm available to you to do that, and also available for questions now.
Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. Hamilton, for that presentation. And just for the record, when you say minority groups, that would include all non-Caucasian individuals and women? I'm sorry, would exclude, I'm sorry, the minority group would include all non-Caucasian males?
Actually, no. For this purpose, all whites, male or female, were counted as white. All minorities, male or female, were counted as minorities. I look specifically only at race for these particular numbers.
Okay. Yeah, and that underscores the need, and the police department has done well, and Chief, I know that recruiting, you know, minorities has always been a difficult challenge. And with that, it certainly underscores the need to probably, and I'm looking at everything that you've put here, but, and I keep going back to this, most African-Americans, and in some cases females, have been reluctant to enter what is seemingly a predominantly white male profession. So when we do the announcements, like to local churches and schools and colleges, I think the one-on-one interaction probably does work better. In fact, one of your cadets in the class fifty-three is a student of mine, whom I personally recruited. But we're going to have to do a little bit more than just putting the information out there. Like I said, if we focus more on predominantly historically black colleges and universities, I don't know what the chief's budget is like in terms of travel, but, you know, there are several schools, and I talked about some of them, Alabama State, and of course A&amp;M, Spillman, and, you know, other institutions, Tuskegee, and places like that. It's a numbers thing, which means we're just going to have to, since we know it's a numbers thing, looking at those percentages, then we're just going to have to recruit more people altogether, including males, white males. I mean, it's a numbers thing. We should never be at a point where we have an academy and not have enough people to fill that slot. And knowing, and I've seen this happen all along, in every academy, someone is going to always wash out. So if we could maybe put a few more people in there than the budget calls for, I mean, if we keep them fine, Mr. Joffreyon, I don't want to say anything I shouldn't say that would compromise the city legally, but anticipating that a certain percentage of cadets will drop out, you know, maybe if we only have a slot for forty, maybe add forty-five. And if we keep them, Mayor, we just have to find money in the budget, and if they, you know, don't make it, then, you know, we have enough that we need for that particular academy. And it seems like, too, we might have to get into a constant recruitment, a continuous recruiting for the city. I know other cities are doing that, too. And while we're, you know, focused primarily on the police department right now, I do want to say that we need to look at all of city government. You know, I love engineering. I'd like to see a little more diversity in engineering. I'm extremely excited and happy with Ms. Martin, Kathy Martin. I believe she probably is the first female engineer that we've had as in department head for the city. I'm excited about things like that, so we can take advantage of this opportunity. The reason I'm so compassionate about it is because Mac McCutcheon, state representative and myself, both were police officers, and our job at one time was to recruit for the city of Huntsville. And we've, you know, gone to Kentucky and other places to recruit candidates, but this could be a grand opportunity to recruit not only, you know, law enforcement, but people for other areas in city government, so that every department and city government would be more reflective of this community that we serve. And I'm not putting a, let me put it this way. Quotas are bad and illegal, but goals are good. And it should be the goal of every department head within city government to create a department that is more reflective of the community that we serve. Now, I'm not saying if you've got a hundred employees, you know, thirty-three have to be minority, I'm not saying that, but I'm saying the goal should be, we should work more towards having that reflected in city government. After all, you know, it's city taxpayers' funds, so I think that is probably the equitable thing to do. But Chief, you are doing well, and I certainly understand the numbers, and we'll just keep plugging away until we can, you know, get what we're looking for. And if by chance, in any way that I can help, you know, I'm certainly open and receptive to that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. Osheski?
Yeah, John, I just want to say, first of all, great brief. I've heard this before, but never seen it and its following in line, and I'm very impressed with how, I'm not impressed, you know, I'm impressed with the numbers. I mean, you do what you got to do, and I'm real excited about the numbers. And I actually got to recruit one in this class out of my workplace as well, and I want to share, I've been watching him all the way through it, from, you know, what's the next polygraph? What's the next? And it's bam, bam, bam. And they know, this particular young man knew exactly what was going on. And I'm also getting to hear reports back on him, and he's doing great, and the training's great, and they're all still fired up. So Chief, I appreciate that as well. And then I ran into one in a restaurant in his little uniform. He has no idea who I was, and I walked up to him, asked him about his training, asked him about this, asked me, and man, it was on it. So there might only be twenty-seven in that group, but I've now seen two of them, and they're outstanding young folks, and I'm excited for the class, Chief, and keep up the good work and keep putting quality folks out into the group.
Thank you.
Mr. Kling, do you have any questions?
I guess just the only comment I'd make is that certainly, you know, keep recruiting out there, people looking for a good community, a good job. I think the city of Huntsville offers that, and, you know, just get the word out, and I think people will come when they find out, you know, the opportunities out there.
Mr. Tremont, I know you're new to this, and I'm startled by the number of no-shows at the early on in the process. Have y'all done any investigating to figure out why they're no-showing?
Well, we started that process, we actually had a meeting last night that I had hosted with the chief, his deputy, Deputy Chief Jackson, who really runs this process on the HPD side, and also with Sandra Simmons and with Byron Thomas. So I feel like we have some understanding, but not fully. It's something that we've got to drill a little bit deeper into. And I asked them to go back and kind of look at what flexibility we have in the manner in which we do some of the application process. You know, there's some sense that there are some people that fill out an application having no intention of ever truly pursuing the job. We also have folks from out of town that put in an application, and then it appears as though they just, you know, travel plans fail or whatever it may be, they just choose not to come in and do the PT test. So like I say, that was by far the largest loss, was just never showing up. And so we've got to understand what that is, and I really don't have the answer right now, but it's something we'll continue to pursue.
Thank you. And discuss lateral moves. It seems like if we wanted to increase minorities, we would go find minority police officers at other departments, in other cities, and recruit them?
You know, that option exists, but there are some limitations to it. And, you know, if they are still within the first couple of years of their tenure, which is probably when they would be easiest to recruit to move, they haven't really put down roots yet in whatever department they come from, then we're obligated to reimburse that department for the cost of their training, and then we would still have to pay to put them through our training and bring them up to speed to the Huntsville standards, and so.
Is that for any department of the state, or is that all over the United States?
You know, I know it'd be within the state, and there may likely be some reciprocal things to departments outside of the state, but, you know, there's just added costs. Those candidates become actually more expensive to us than a new candidate does. So we're normally hesitant to do that. We also, you know, sometimes if they're willing to move and their leadership is willing to let them go, they may not always be the most qualified candidate. And so, you know, we've gotten some that way that are phenomenal, and we've also got some that ended up not being the best candidates for our police department. So we have to be cautious with that. Doesn't mean we don't do it, but when the chief does, I'd ask him to put more time and attention into really vetting that candidate to make sure that we're getting someone who's moving for the right reason. And, you know, quite frankly, most people want to go back and police within, you know, their community where their family is. And so we don't get a lot of candidates that travel in from other places where their families are, you know, somewhere else. We mostly are getting candidates that have some sort of roots or some reason to be in Huntsville. And so, you know, the more local efforts tend to be the most fruitful. Again, I agree completely with Mr. Culver in that we need to go out and hit some of those colleges that are away, and we have Huntsville natives who have gone away to college, and then we can recruit them back to the community. So certainly going out and finding where they've gone and try and target them is, you know, may be very fruitful to us. And so it's just trying to get a good return on the investment of the recruiting effort is what we need to do. And, you know, there's also age limits, so, you know, you can spend a lot of time, and our police force does spend a lot of time partnering with the schools and trying to talk to high schoolers about thinking about future work in the police force, but you can't become a police officer until you're twenty-one. So there's typically about a three-year gap from graduating high school until you can actually start and you'll carry a weapon and serve as a sworn officer. So that's a three-year gap where it's easy for them to find something else to do and to maybe lose them as viable candidates. So I think, you know, our recruiting effort has to be, well, I think it's all of the above. It's hit as wide and broader market as you possibly can, but certainly trying to really go out and target those folks where we expect the best return is what we've got to identify. And I, you know, I threw up that list of all the things that we've done. Some of those, we may not be getting any really return on that, maybe we put less effort there and more effort in some of the others. So that's something that we'll continue to really drill into and see if we can understand where we're getting our best return and maybe increase the efforts in some of those areas. In some, in cases, it may be more time and attention, in other cases, it may be a monetary investment, but we'll continue to do that and certainly strive to get better every single year.
And I may have missed this, but of the twenty-three, well, twenty-six candidates that are left, twenty-three were white and three were minorities. Do you know how many were women?
Six women. Let me double, make sure I've got that right. The number I have is six women. Chief, is that correct? Yeah, six women.
Thank you. Mr. Culver?
Just another quick comment, and I don't know if you all... Just another quick comment, and I don't know if you all are teaching the polygraph. I noticed that you lost three minorities under the polygraph. It could be good if maybe we teach the polygraph in terms of, you know, if you've done drugs or something beyond a year and a half, you know, that's not gonna disqualify you or something like that. I don't know what our policy is. I think it used to be that if you've done marijuana or something like that, and, you know, it wasn't used extensively, or it's been longer than a year and a half or two years, that that's not gonna disqualify you. Because I can only imagine what, you know, a young person would say if a police officer is asking them, you know, have you ever used drugs or marijuana? And maybe they experimented in college or something, or in high school, which really would not be a relationship stopper. Is that not right, Chief?
I'm sorry, Chief, you need to go to the microphone, please.
And I'm sorry, Mr. Hamilton, I know that you may not understand that.
The issues that you talk about, about prior drug use?
Yes.
We have a policy that addresses the issues that you just talked about. I can't get into the detail, but none, those issues are rarely, I can't recall those issues coming up in the polygraph.
Okay, okay, okay. The important thing is that, you know, we don't want people to feel that they have to lie about something that really wouldn't disqualify them, but they get disqualified because they lied.
We make it clear to them that there's a level of acceptability in conduct that they engaged in before, in the terms of drugs.
Right.
And not to lie about it, and that's worked pretty good for us.
Okay, great, wonderful. Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Mr. Hamilton.
Mr. President, I'd like to thank Mr. Hamilton, Chief. Thank y'all for drilling through this. Human Resources and EOC, everybody has drilled into this and looked at it very hard. It is an important issue for us. We gotta do better. And I think everybody's committed to doing better on this and making sure that our police force, our city workers and our employees reflect what our population is. So thank you for all your work on this. This was a very good drill down.
Thank you. Councilmembers, as I mentioned earlier in the meeting, we are going to vote right now on the Office of Business Relations. We put this on the agenda. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Mayor Battle, could you explain this again?
This is the position that was formerly in the mayor's office, which was the Director of Legislative Affairs and Economic Development. We pulled out Legislative Affairs. We have made the economic development more on the industrial side. We put the retail and economic development between Mr. Davis and Planning, where Michelle Jordan is, where she was working with that before. So it just, it makes sense. As we go through, each time we have changes in administration, this gives us a chance to shape it and shape it so that it's better for the citizens and for the responses that we should be doing as a city. And this business relations is, if you remember, the Director of Legislative Affairs and Economic Development was a, was classified as a twenty-two employee. This is gonna be classified as a nineteen, so it is not necessarily a downgrade in the position, but it reflects more what the position will be doing.
Thank you. Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? It carries. Mayor, do you have anything else tonight?
Nothing else. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Oshewski?
Yeah, I got a couple of things. First of all, I have two very good friends that are not here tonight, but they're watching on TV. They're at the house that I went to college with, and was my classmate, and the other one is, has got a son who, and I'm just sharing with you, they're great Americans, and they're watching TV, and I love them, and I'm glad they're out there. On a serious note now, I got Lyle Voiles out here, is one of my Civic Association, great Americans as well. And as always, Lyle, I appreciate what you do and appreciate all the checking and all the stuff you hold us accountable for. John, I wanna publicly thank you tonight for getting that dangling cable wire thing going. I'm meeting with your folks and in my other life, and there's some movement going. I'm real excited for what you're doing there. John, I also wanna thank you for coming to that Civic Association meeting with me the other night. There was some movement there, some straight shooting. I was really excited that you were there to help me with that, 'cause I'm not saying it's all perfect, but the folks walked away, and I'm getting great feedback, and I appreciate it. Can't go at night without, Shane, appreciate you helping me with my business opportunity that I'm doing down in my district, and appreciate that. Kathy Martin, the same thing with this other business opportunity that Shane, you guys are helping me with. And then Terry, I appreciate, as always, you helping me with my ditches, man. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Culver?
Thank you, Mr. President. Last week, we had a town hall meeting, and Mayor, I can't thank you enough for all of the department heads that showed up. I see Joy McKee here tonight. She was there. Kenny Anderson, the Chief of Police, Chief Louis Morris. And I shouldn't have gotten into calling names. I see Mr. Binion. And we had probably thirteen, fourteen department heads, Kathy Martin, and Mr. Hamilton, as always, was impeccable. In fact, he made my job very easy, because he, I just turned it over to him as the city administrator, and he introduced all of the department heads and certainly entertained questions, helped us out. I don't think we had much that we couldn't answer collectively. And this is why I'm just so excited and happy with our City of Huntsville employees. And Mayor, that's why I fight for the raises, because we don't wanna lose them. We wanna keep all of our City of Huntsville employees, and they deserve everything that we can do and even more. So let's keep that in mind as we go into our next budget year. I had something else to say, but, okay, we'll just chalk that up as a junior moment. That's all, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Kling.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, over the last several days, been a lot of things going on out in the district that I've enjoyed getting out to. Two Saturdays ago, Holiday Homes Neighborhood Association had their cleanup, and we had a good turnout from the neighborhood, and Joy's, Joy McKee's folks were there to provide assistance, and we covered a lot of territory and got a lot of good garbage picked up, if there is such a thing as good garbage. Last Saturday, the Continental League had their opening day at University Park, and I was glad to be out there with Mr. Hamilton, Mayor Battle, and Mayor fired a strike in on the first pitch, no short hopping, and we're proud of him for that. But Dana McConnell and all the other parents do a great job, you know, providing support, baseball opportunities for the kids to play. And Recreation Department Landscape, they had the field looking great. And, you know, I just wish I'd been able to play on a field like in the condition that they had out there last Saturday when I was young. But that was a great, great day. Last night, there was a historic presentation that was made at Merrimack Hall talking about the history of Huntsville's historic districts. And, you know, it's kind of fascinating, you know, I've been on the council for a while, and just all the new things that you find out about the history of this community, all the things that are taking place in different niches of the city, different ethnic events and everything, great food events. That, you know, it's just fascinating how much this city has and the history that it has. And that was a great, great presentation that was made last night. Speaking of food, last Friday, I was one of about seven thousand people that were downtown when they had the food trucks congregate. And there's, people talk about there's not much to do in downtown Huntsville. Well, last Friday, I think was certainly a great argument that that's not true. There was music, and this is one of, I believe, a monthly event that's gonna be taking place on the third Friday of each month downtown. Great event, a lot of food trucks, and a lot of people. Let's see, last Monday, I had my town meeting, similar to what, same time that Councilman Culver had his. My format is different. It's more informal. The people that come, they get to call the shots on what we're gonna talk about. We gather around a couple of tables at the library. Very informal, gives me a chance to find out things I need to look into, things that are good, things that are not so good, and I always appreciate the people that do come out to those town meetings I have. And they're on the third Monday of each month at the public library. May the fifth, with the Holiday Homes Neighborhood Association, we're gonna be having Dr. Wodenski to come down and talk about the City School System's Plan of Action for West Huntsville. As we know, from both the Justice Department proposed plan and the City School System proposed rezoning plan, several schools in West Huntsville are gonna be closed. That decision is under the jurisdiction made by the elected school board, not the city council, but we're talking about empty schools, and that impacts neighborhoods, and certainly that's something that we're interested in here in city government. And I wanna express my appreciation. Dr. Wodenski, took them all of two seconds to agree to come speak, and that'll be a good meeting, and we're looking forward to a good discussion, a good positive interaction between the residents of West Huntsville and Dr. Wodenski. And had a little episode of Crime Stoppers on a firsthand basis. There was a phone call I'd received, and some contact was made about a gentleman that was seen walking and trying doorknobs along Wingate Avenue in the Lower Piedmont area. And one security system picked up a video of this gentleman, and later it turned out that somebody's car was broken into and a weapon was taken. As a result of the video that was made available to the police department, the individual was apprehended. And I wanna compliment the police department, I think they had worked with the Sheriff's Department, and Investigator Kamic, I believe that's his name, and the police chief. We're all involved in this, along with the precinct captain. And I think it's very impressive. We hear about these things, we see them happen, but to be involved in something where an incident occurs, there's some information, and two days later, the individual was apprehended. And that just shows that we do have a pretty good, pretty good police department, and we appreciate the good work that they do. Mr. President, that's all I have. It's Panoply, and I hope everybody's gonna have a great weekend. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kling, and I just wanna mention two events coming up. One, Mr. Kling has already talked about, Panoply. It opens, well, it's already open. It opens for the public tomorrow and Saturday and Sunday, and we're actually gonna have good weather this year, so make sure you go. And then Huntsville and Grissom are playing in the second round of the state baseball playoffs. They play tomorrow at four-thirty, a doubleheader, and so that's a big event on the south side of town. So wish both teams well. Mr. Mayor?
One last thing, Mr. President. This is a shout-out to Ms. McKee, Joy McKee. She had part of her recycling green team effort this past week was to have all the schools compete for recycling bottle caps. Those bottle caps are shipped to Troy, Alabama, made into paint cans, plastic paint cans. And she collected 1.1 million bottle caps and sent them down. And poor Thomas, who works in their office, had to go pick every one of those 1.1 million bottle caps up, and Thomas is tired. He's ready, he's not yet ready for competition next year, but he's resting up, so he'll be ready to go next time. But Joy, congratulations. That was a great thing.
Congratulations, Joy. We're now at thirteen unfinished business items for action. Thirteen A is ordinance number fourteen dash two-four-five for the annexation of land on the south side of Homestead Road and west of Taylor Road. This was introduced April tenth, two thousand and fourteen, at the regular council meeting. The Chair moves for approval.
Second.
Second by Mr. Kling. Ms. Leto, could you explain this, please?
Yes, this is 1.36 acres of property. It's the area that you see here in the purple color. It's an existing, single-family detached home that proposed, excuse me, they're annexing for city services.
Thank you. Further discussion? All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have three new business items for introduction. Fourteen A is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land on the west side of Old Big Cove Road and north of Bird Drive. B is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land on the south side of Naughty Walls Road and west of Old Pig Cove Road. And C is introduction of an ordinance concerning the annexation of land on the east side of Old Big Cove Road and south of Miller Lane. We're now at fifteen new business items for consideration or action. Keep in mind, fifteen F has been deleted. Please notify the Chair of any items you'd like to hold. The Chair holds fifteen P as impaw. Are there any other items? Hearing nine, fifteen A is a request for authorization to advertise and fill the position of Electoral Inspector Grade Fifteen. B is a resolution authorizes the City of Huntsville to enter agreement with Alabama Historical Commission for a grant award in the amount of $1,483 for a scholarship to allow Jessica White to attend Your Town Alabama Workshop in Jasper, Alabama on May fourteenth through sixteenth, two thousand and fourteen, and attend the NA PC Conference in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania on July sixteenth through twentieth, two thousand and fourteen. C is a resolution authorizes acceptance of donations. D is ordinance to amend budget ordinance number thirteen dash six-thirty by changing the authorized personnel strength in various departments and funds. E is a resolution authorizes mayor into three-year lease agreement with Microsoft through SHI to administer Microsoft Enterprise Agreement Services and Discounts to the City of Huntsville. G is a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the worker's compensation claim with Timothy Barner. H is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke BB and T Bank Letter Credit Number 1293 for Pavilion Phase Two subdivision. I is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Worthington Federal Bank Letter Credit Number 2013-044 for Village at Overland Cove subdivision. J is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Worthington Federal Bank Letter Credit Number 2013-045 for Indian Lakes subdivision. K is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke Bryant Bank Letter Credit Number 1139 for Clayton Cove subdivision. L is a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke South Point Bank Letter Credit Number 9500-2507 for Nature's Landing at the Reserve subdivision. M is a resolution authorizing mayor into real estate sales agreement between the City of Huntsville and SMC Enterprises LLC for property in Cummings Research Park. N is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement between the City of Huntsville and propertyroom.com for disposal of property evidence held by the Huntsville Police Department. O is a resolution authorizing mayor to agency appropriation agreement between the City of Huntsville and Huntsville Madison County Rescue Squad. Q is a resolution authorizing mayor to agreement with the low bidder, Reed Contracting Service Inc., for resurfacing of residential streets, two thousand and fourteen, Phase One, project number sixty-five fourteen R zero-two. R is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute amendment to the two thousand and twelve action plan. S is a resolution authorizing mayor to modify Resolution thirteen one-seventy-one agreement between Family Services Center and the City of Huntsville to use of home investment partnership funds for affordable housing to change light items within the budget. T is a resolution authorizing mayor to the contract with Family Services Inc. to build one house with home investment partnership funds. U is a resolution authorizing mayor to enter agreement with Primary Residential Mortgage Inc. as a participating lender for the down payment assistance program. V is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a real estate agreement between the City of Huntsville Department of Community Development and Kevin and Wanda McIntosh. W is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a real estate agreement between the City of Huntsville Department of Community Development and Dew Inc. X is a resolution authorizing agreement between the City of Huntsville and Route Match Inc. Y is a resolution authorizing mayor in agreement between the City of Huntsville Doing Business has the Huntsville Madison County Emergency Management Agency and the Madison County Alabama Commission. Z is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute change order number two to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Consolidated Construction Inc. for the North Public Safety Complex located at forty-fourteen North Mobile Parkway. Double A is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute change order number three in the final to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Consolidated Construction Inc. for heavy-duty fleet services located at twenty-seven thirty-nine Johnson Road. Double B is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute change order one and final to the agreement between the City of Huntsville and Pierce Construction Company for WH Council parking deck at three hundred St. Clair Avenue. Double C is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute agreement for preliminary engineering, right-of-way acquisition, utility, and construction between the state of Alabama and the City of Huntsville, Alabama. Double D is a resolution authorizing mayor to execute a real estate purchase agreement between the City of Huntsville and Attitude LLC. The Chair moves for consolidation approval of fifteen A through E, fifteen G through O, fifteen Q through fifteen Double D.
Second.
A motion to consolidate approval by the Chair, seconded by Mr. Kling. All is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. Fifteen P is ordinance declaring property surplus and authorizing donation of said property to the Huntsville Madison County Rescue Squad. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion by Mr. Kling. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Oshewski. Chief, could you explain this, please?
Yes, sir. The donation, the previous item was a donation of the radios to the rescue squad or for the mayor to enter into an agreement to appropriate them. There are thirteen radios that are older radios that don't have emergency buttons. They're not suitable for police work, and they can, they're surplus. not suitable for police work, and they can, they're surplus, they can be donated to the rescue squad. Not all of them even have batteries, it's just the radio itself. And I believe the reason that it needs unanimous consent is it was a late addition to the...
It does not need unanimous consent. My question is, will they be able to communicate with our police officers using these radios? We talked about having everybody in the county on the same radio, using the same radios? And so I was concerned why we're giving away some that we can use or...
Well, we can't because they don't have an emergency button, they're not acceptable for public safety. They're the older radios, they're the same, capable of the same frequency, they just, they don't have an emergency button.
And this group in public safety, and they can use them?
Well, yeah, they can because they're first responders.
Okay. So we're all going to be able to talk to each other and...
Yes, sir, they're capable of being programmed up so we can all talk to each other.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? All is in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It carries. We have no legal department item transactions, we're now at non-royal communications from the public. Ms. Reed, if you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Jackie Reed, 303 Jack Coleman Drive. I have two quick, small issues. One is Hermitage Avenue. I would like to know why, and I've been told we can't, and I've told we've been looking into it. That dip, as you come out on Hermitage, you know what I'm talking about? I don't ever want to hear the city saying we can't do anything about anything. We can. And I wish somebody would look at that and get that fixed over there before somebody gets dipped into it and throw that in the middle of the street. I think that's very important. And that last item on there, Attitude, I mean, I guess you can tell me when the meeting's over, ask it hold, I'd like to know why we're buying it and what to use for it. Real estate purchase. Can anybody answer anything I ever ask? I never hear an answer on anything.
That's not true.
That amazes me. People say they don't ever answer you. Well, I can't help that.
What's your question?
My question was two or three things earlier in the meeting, but I didn't hear a word about them. And this was to execute a real estate purchase. What are we using it for?
Mr. Hamilton, could you answer Ms. Reed's question?
Mr. Davis.
Mr. Davis will answer. Ms. Reed, if you could share the microphone with Mr. Davis?
I'll leave. Thank you.
The question is, what are we using it for?
Councilmember, the real estate purchase agreement that you approved tonight is for Cummings Research Park, is to improve the improvements of Lake Five. There's five lakes within Cummings Research Park that handles all retention and detention for our research park, which is now grown to the second largest in the US, fourth largest in the world. We do not require any of the companies out there that purchase land from us to have their own private retention detention ponds. We did that for two reasons. One, to maximize the amount of land that we can sell to maintain research parks. And then, two, we wanted the aesthetics of the lakes. In modeling those lakes, we've known that Lake Five is smaller in size for the overall build out of research parks. We're buying property so that we can make improvements to that lake.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Reed, did I answer your question? If you go back to the microphone, you still have time left?
No, it's good.
Okay. Ma'am, do you want to speak to the council? If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Teri Michael, 115 Mill Creek Crossing. I apologize, I was not present in the room when you called my name earlier this evening. And I do apologize. There's been a lot of talk about 21st century learning, 21st century technology, careers for the 21st century. And I know that Huntsville has a lot of money invested in technology and things moving things forward, the 21st century. One problem I see is that our thinking is still stuck in the 20th century. This is 2014, not 1962. All the talk of segregation, the zoning, the rezoning, the busing, it's showing that we are still stuck in the past. And we need a new way of thinking in order to shed all these things and move forward. We want a new existence, but we're still thinking with old ideas. The comment made by the superintendent last night about the uniforms on the north end, it shows a limited understanding of the community. And I think it really goes both ways here in Huntsville. I think that there's a lack of understanding for each other on both sides, and that is very, that comment he made is very indicative of that. I read an article recently, it's called "Segregation Now," and it centered around Tuscaloosa. And it talked about the city and the burdens and struggles that they have in moving forward in cooperation with the schools. And it really showed how they work hand in hand. So it made me really appreciate what's happening here in Huntsville. But we need forward thinking to match what we're trying to do here. In Tuscaloosa, instead of trying to figure it out and think forward, they're finding ways to segregate their city, to push the high poverty kids out, and they're not addressing race issues. And I think that some of what's happening here in Huntsville, we are still thinking of those ways of moving the city forward, but we're not bringing the whole community together with that. Instead of actually integrating... Okay, let's take, let's start this again. Studies have showed the integrated students are smarter, they're well-balanced, and they're better equipped to handle the world. So not only is it better to have our city and our students integrated, but now let's talk about just the education level. There was a study commissioned for, by the Congress for our federal Department of Education. And it talked about diversity in the schools and how we could move forward as a country. And the study showed that $50 trillion could be generated over an 80-year period if we just educated our high-poverty children at the same level as the non-poverty children. And so I would...
Ms. Michael, your time's up, do you need extra time?
Yes, please, if I could just have one minute.
One more minute, please.
Yeah. So this is the point that I'd really like to make, is by forward thinking and really trying to integrate our community, instead of just making the backward type thinking that we've done in the past, we can generate more funds. That's $50 trillion on a national level over an 80-year period. Here in Huntsville, if we truly educated our children at all levels and we truly welcomed integration, then the city can truly move forward in, on paper and in actuality. We'd be a very strong city if we could come together and do that. And thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Hill?
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. President. Let's examine if we can utilize funds to organize and operate correction and counseling programs. I'm very impressed with the move forward of the police academy. But I want to know, are we engaging in offering money from budgets to fund programs that are going to deal with corrections, the actual problems that are causing the rise in the homicide rates? Is there a way that we can get an answer to how much is allocated towards programs like that?
We can find that out, our budget's online, and we'll get to your answer.
Okay, excellent. Is it possible to evaluate, I don't know if it would necessarily be called an audit, with Huntsville Utilities for the pricing hikes? I would want to examine between the past eight to 12 months. I believe some of the readings were probably generic just based on the weather and how they may have estimated people would have used their utilities. What would be the process of getting those answers?
Call Huntsville Utilities.
Well, I mean, we've tried that, that's why I'm asking this.
Who has called Huntsville Utilities?
Well, I mean, they say that you can't be connected to anyone to...
Who is they?
The operator.
Okay. So you, nobody will talk to you?
I mean, that's why I brought it to the seat.
Okay. We'll find somebody to talk to you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Also...
Mr. Kling?
Huntsville Utilities does have a program where they can take your bill and they can average it out over the years, so that way you don't have peaks in the winter and valleys in the springtime and peaks in the summertime. They can, they have an equalization program that they can do based on what they anticipate that your bill's going to be. And of course, any differential goes back to you.
Would that be for the majority or just a single individual?
Individual customers. I mean, any individual customer can contact them on that program. I've referred a lot of people that have had that. And it means that when there's mild weather, you're paying a little bit more, but in the wintertime and summertime, you'd be paying less than what you would. But they take your individual billing cycle, and then they can average it out over the course of a year on a monthly basis. They do that for all customers.
Thank you, Councilman Kling. I have two more questions. Were there any special negotiations made between the mayor or the city of Huntsville alongside the Huntsville City Board of Education to isolate and resegregate our community for a monetary gain or corporations coming into the city? And are you willing to participate in an investigation to solidify your positioning on this?
I can't speak for the mayor, I don't know.
Well, I also mentioned, and the city of Huntsville...
Yeah, not that I'm aware of.
Not that you're aware of. Would you be willing to go through an investigation process to solidify your positioning in this?
Solidify my position on what?
In the cities, you're saying that you're not aware of any negotiations between the city and the Board of Education to isolate communities and resegregate and to do a lot of things with our zoning, bringing in the use of companies and corporations? Would you be willing to be investigated on this?
I'm not sure I follow you. But you can come talk to me after the meeting, I'll be glad to talk to you about it.
Okay, well, it's more so for the entire city, not just you personally. This is not you, I'm saying as a representation for the city. But, thank you, I'll talk with you then. And my final question is, what development is being planned for, I guess, all the residents north of University? We see we're going in that direction, there's not many new businesses or things that I guess the community would much rather see. And I believe that plays a big part in what we see come out of these individuals that live in these residences. Are there any developments in sight now, or do we have any information on that?
Mr. Walmart Neighborhood Grocery Store plan for Oakwood and Jordan. And Mr. Culver, do you have any more information? I'm not real familiar with the north.
Some things that I can't talk about right now that are in the plan, which requires some additional annexation and which is probably going to involve another grocery store perhaps in a plaza, but that hasn't been formalized at this time. But we do see a need for economic development north of University Drive. It's going to require some challenges. We've been talking about it. I think the mayor has a corridor study that we're looking at as well to see what we can do. It's going to take something different to attract people into northwest Huntsville. Because while business owners are attracted to Huntsville, you know, we don't tell them where to go, but we can create some incentives for them to go to areas that we would like for them to go. So we're probably going to have to, you know, do some things, whether it's an abatement of taxes or sharing taxes or, you know, a reduction in property cost or something. But we'll have to do something to generate and stimulate interest in north and west Huntsville.
Is there a possible way that citizens or anyone who might have proposals for ideas for those areas can meet with the planning commissions or the councilmen to discuss those?
Anyone can always bring ideas. I've identified some individuals that are in my district who are going to be instrumental in helping me with that. As we work with the mayor on that, I think the mayor also has created an economic development team, is that right, mayor? That's in north Huntsville, that's made up of people who are going to work with the mayor's office and with myself as well.
Councilman Culver, he's welcome to submit anything to myself, Director of Urban Development, or Michelle Jordan, Director of Planning, or Dennis Mattson, the director or manager of Urban Long Range Planning. The three of us welcome any ideas or any suggestions.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Mr. President and Councilman, for your time. Have a great weekend.
Thank you. Ms. Hamilton, do you want to say anything? Okay, good. Okay, Mr. President.
Thank you, sir. One last thing relative to Ann's School of Dance that I didn't get to, I didn't mention because I wasn't sure where things were going. We know that it's in the second to the final phase of going through the courts. Interestingly, though, when she filed to ask the court to review this, she did not file a stay, is my understanding. Which means she does, she did not ask the court to stay the court's rulings until the final ruling that came out. Which means the judgment that the court has leveled on her should be enforced now, not waiting through the court system. I'm not a lawyer, and I'm going to make a phone call tonight to verify this, but my understanding is, is that through the process, you have to request a stay. And my understanding is she requested an appeal of the court's ruling, but not a stay of the court's ruling. If indeed that's the case, then the city should be enforcing what the court has already established as their final resolution on this. So I'm just, I'm raising my hand, asking a question. If that is indeed the case, that a stay has not been granted during this next phase, which by the way, the phases are, she is going to submit a request to the court that already ruled against her, then she will appeal to the state Supreme Court. If the state Supreme Court rules against her, there is no constitutional issue here, it goes no further, it becomes the law. So if a stay has not been issued at this point, does she not have to follow the rule that the courts have issued twice against her? That's my question to you, since the city would have to enforce it. Gentlemen?
Mr.?
Ms. Kling, you probably know the answer since we went over this in link last week, last meeting?
I, let's just say, we had a very animated discussion about the last meeting. To me, it seemed like once the circuit court came out with the ruling, then the onus should have been on the other side and that the city should have enforced the court, the judge's order at that point. The, you know, appeal to the appellate court conceivably could have been turned over, but then I think the city can show we made a good faith effort because we were following the direction of the circuit court. The city attorney disagreed with me on that. And then I thought after three appellate judges unanimously ruled in favor that that would have resolved the issue. Apparently, the legal issues around here are something that are above my head because it seems like that there's too much coddling on one side instead of providing assistance to the victims. Maybe that's, maybe that's a symptom of our society. But we've had four judges unanimously rule on two levels in support of the neighborhood. And I, you know, I'm just very frustrated. I am at a point where I'm happy to talk, I feel like I have to talk to an outside attorney instead of my own city attorney about the issue. So...
Well, my concern here is following the steps so that we're doing things right. If indeed the step is, you have to file a stay with the, with the next step that you would go through, and that stay has not been filed, all they did was file an appeal, which means the stay has been lifted. That means the ruling of the law says you're supposed to do the following. If, if that says we're supposed to follow the law, then why aren't we? And obviously, y'all didn't vote in favor of it, so somewhere along the line, you got some input from someone that said, this is the steps you go through. Well, I'm just, I'm not a lawyer, gentlemen, I'm just, I live in the neighborhood, I'm just trying to make sure that I follow the rule of law and everyone else does too. So I'm just asking, if indeed a stay has not been done, according to the orders of the court, you're supposed to do the following steps, here's what they are, we know what they are, you've seen it. What are we going to do? Are we, are we going to just ignore it? I just don't know. I'm trying to, as a citizen, I'm trying to understand what, what the steps are. So I'm sorry. I don't see in, in the paperwork that's been, been given, that it says that you can ignore what the court says. So...
I'll, I'll try my best to be Mr. Joffrey on, since he's already left tonight. Your situation is, it's a court case between the resident and the business.
Yes, sir.
And, and that's the court case. The judge's ruling says that the business has to do such and such. And, and the remedy for that, if the business does not do such and such, is that the, that the resident can ask the court to file them to be in contempt of court. It's not an enforcement function of the city. We are not part of that red, of that court suit, we're not part of the court order, we're not, that's not, that's not our purview in that. This is between the resident and that business owner there.
Well, my understanding is, is that when Judge Bell saw the case, and he got it based upon the zoning, it was a zoning question to the court, he became the zoning board in the legal eyes to determine what was, what was right and wrong. As that case went through and it was finalized, the orders of the court, that at that point, the city has to accept that ruling, and that's where the key is. Right now, what we're asking is that if, and according to what my understanding is, and I'm going to go back and verify this, Mayor Battle, because I appreciate, we've heard all this way too much, I know. But, but if a, if she's appealed the case, but it hasn't been stayed... But, but if a, if she's appealed the case, but it hasn't been stayed, that means the orders of the court become actionable, which means the court says, "This is how she's supposed to do something." He created, gave the zoning variance to her with conditions, as the zoning board would have done, which means he acted in the case of the zoning board. If that is indeed the case, then the City of Huntsville is obligated to enforce that issue.
Yeah.
So, well, I'm gonna be talking to an attorney to verify whether that, what the legal points here are, but I'm just asking that we, whatever the court says, for or against, that we just follow that, and right now, it seems like we're not.
Ms. Kling, will you meet with the citizen after and, and figure out how you're gonna handle this?
I'll be, I'll be glad to. I'm afraid that much of what he says, I'm in agreement with, and again, uh, I talked to an outside attorney, and there's some questions about, a lot of things about this issue, but I'll be glad to.
Gentlemen, thank you, appreciate your time, thank you for what you do.
Mr. Hennessy?
I'll lighten things up a little bit. Walt Hennessy, uh, with ten thousand two Hogan Drive, three five eight oh three, uh, and I'm speaking, I'm making some announcements from Huntsville South, uh, the civic organization in South Huntsville. Uh, we have a couple of events coming up. Uh, the first one is this Saturday from seven until nine-thirty in the morning, we're having a pancake breakfast. The public is invited, and of course, the, uh, the, the president, uh, council members are invited as well, and the mayor. On May the seventeenth, we're having a golf tournament, uh, it's a shotgun start, and uh, it's gonna be at the municipal golf course. Uh, we encourage your participation in that, we still have a lot of holes available for you to reserve, to sponsor. Uh, the cost of, uh, entering the con, or entering the golf course is, uh, uh, the tournament is sixty-five dollars per person. We're also having a rummage sale coming up on June the seventh. Uh, it's gonna be at the Star Market, it's gonna go from, uh, eight until noon, and we're gonna have a lot of good stuff down there to, uh, to buy. It's a rummage sale. And all of these, all the proceeds that, uh, that we raise are gonna be going toward putting in, uh, park benches at the new, uh, park being developed down on the end of Chaney Thompson Road, on the south end of Chaney Thompson Road. Uh, and I rode by there the other day, and I'd like to commend, uh, Councilman Olszewski and Commissioner Riddick, uh, they're really coming along well with that, uh, developing the park down there. So, uh, uh, that's what's going on in, uh, South Huntsville in terms of the Huntsville South organization, and I thank you for your time, and have a good weekend.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else wish to address the council?
Move to adjourn?
Where adjourn?